Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board Selectment Meeting of August 1st at 7:00 PM. I declare this meeting now open. And please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First on the agenda is our announcements, and we have one announcement here.
Can I speak to that?
Sure.
Is that what you have? Okay, so there are some signs around town. There's more to be put out, but the Centennial Committee, their next event will be taking place on August 20th, on a Saturday, in the park, at the Veterans Memorial Park. It will start at 4:00 and run until 9:30. So we have about five to six food trucks coming in. The Friends of Oxbridge First Night is coming in, Del Lemonade, a clam cake truck. So we've got a whole bunch of food trucks coming in. We ask people to bring their blankets and chairs and just kind of hang out. And Northeast Groove, who is...
She's gonna watch a turkey over there.
Oh, do I?
Oh, my gosh.
Story of my life.
They're getting an early seat for the Centennial Celebration.
So bring their blankets, hang out, and at 9:00 from the old mill, there'll be fireworks. It should be about a 20 to 25 minute presentation. And the music is actually being provided by Northeast Groove, which is Millville's own, Dave Drueniac and his wife. They will be playing from 4:00 to 6:00, and then again from 7:00 to 9:00. So we're really looking forward to it, and we hope that everyone can come down. And we're hoping to announce some test balloons on heights, so people can find out if they can sit home and relax and have a cookout and still see it. So we'll be putting that out there. So just keep following us on Facebook. We do have our website, Millville's, oh, oh, is it Millville Centennial 100? Millville, I'm sorry, it's Millville MA 100.org, and that's our official website with all of our information on there.
Can you put your cell phones in your pocket? Because it's really messing with the microphones.
That's fine. That's me. I'm just looking. So, that's the next event, so hopefully we'll see everyone there.
Still hearing?
Nope.
Don't put your phone on the table.
Makes a lot of noise.
He just scolded us.
Thank you, Jennifer.
You're welcome.
Approval of minutes of June 20th, 2016 at 7:00 PM.
I make a motion to accept the minutes of June 20th of the 7:00 PM meeting.
I will second that. Roll.
Aye.
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 Wait, wait, my name, why isn't my name on here?
Did you come in late?
My name's not on here. I don't know if I can second it.
No, you can't.
Nope.
I'll second.
We have President Warrants this evening.
Yes, you do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have two, and I will talk and speak to you about our accounting service agreement that's with Oxbridge a little bit later. But this is our first go-around with the new system, and you'll see a warrant approval for the month of June totaling $25,815.39, and our first year for the month beginning of July totaling $3,253.91. I will, like I said, talk a little bit more in depth about our experiences with Oxbridge, but this will give you an indication of where we're at at this point in time, and we can save it to sign afterwards.
Thank you. Approval of warrants?
Take a motion to accept the warrants as presented.
Second. Roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is Police and Fire Department report. Quinn.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, we are going to be passing over this particular agenda item, not for any other reason other than the fact that we've had some continuing questions that both the Chief and I are working on, and I know that you have raised in your past meetings, in particular with regards to procurement, and we've learned some new things about what we might be able to do going forward. I do have some additional information that I want the Board to consider before we eventually put it on a future agenda item, but I know that the Chief and I are working on that. We're hoping to come together in the future with you in terms of a workshop session. I know the Chief had mentioned that, that maybe we can potentially have that, and we can iron out the procedure in terms of procurement, so we're not going to have any questions going forward with that. And I think that's a wise thing to do, and then present it as a regular Board meeting in the future if the Board continues to proceed in that direction after a workshop. So I would ask the Board to think about slating it for a workshop and then present it as a regular agenda item in the future, and I know the Chief would like to have that as well.
Please. I'll entertain a motion for a workshop. It's almost. Second. Roll.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. There are no guest speakers here. Public foruming comment.
Just trying to wait, see what's going to happen with 171 Central Street.
Okay. Moving on, correspondence. Mrs. Callahan, DLS Community Compact IT grant, I understand, was approved?
It was, and I can put in your packets the approval of that. One of the things that I've been in touch with Pam Coker was to get a timeline, and they have now executed the grant on their side after we submitted it in terms of the actual contract, and they expect six to eight weeks for it to be put into our account. So that's a good timeliness for us to be able to proceed with some of the actual things that we're doing here for upgrading our accounting services technologically wise.
CMRPC fuel procurement bid?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is another correspondence that's come through CMRPC. I know you had attended a meeting in which they talked about putting together bids for regional services. This year, they have again included us in a fuel oil bid that they just recently opened, and the award was, the bidding award was put to Peterson Oil, which is ours. This year, they were able to secure a bid amount per gallon of $1.675, which last year was $2.10. So in the previous year to that, it was $3.20. So I think what we've got is a nice decline, and it could be because the number of people actually going in for the fuel oil bid has increased. So just to give you an idea, I put together and looked at what we spent last year for 12 fills since November of last year. We put in about 4,300 gallons of fuel. The total expenditure would have been close to $9,000 roughly from November to June, which is usually when the actual contract starts, even though it's awarded from July. And if we were to take that this year, it would give us a total savings about close to $1,800 or a little bit more. So it's actually, yeah, it would be significant for a little town like ours if we get that this year. So I'd like to be able to go in that direction again, and as a procurement person, I just wanted you to know that that might be a good substantial saving, so I would like, yeah, sure, I think that would be good.
I entertain a motion to go with the CMRPC fuel oil bid.
It's almost.
Second. Roll.
Aye.
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 Any comments?
Before we move on, that, the IT grant, just so the general public knows, that's a grant for $57,000.
It is, and it's significant, and I know that it was quite competitive. Some of our other area communities were...
And that was the Community Compact that we started?
It's one of...
Two.
Yeah, there's a second grant. The other ones we're working on now to develop the scope, but we have another one that's expected to be fulfilled, and it actually includes two components, one for $15,000 and one for $25,000. That has to do with looking at our financial management practices. So those together, combined with the $57,000, is really coming at a very important time for this community. I can't say that enough, so I'm very pleased with being able to somehow put those resources to good use, and we're already starting to do that with our intermunicipal agreement with Oxbridge, so that's great. And I forgot to mention that because we've mentioned it a couple other times, but it's quite significant. So thank you for pointing that out.
I'd like to mention as well that there are other opportunities out there, in that the Commonwealth is pushing Masworks, and there are opportunities to clean up brownfields and lots of things. So I think we should maintain an aggressive posture in pursuing these opportunities. Mrs. Callahan, we have one appointment here. The Council on Aging is voted for, and I'd like to raise to this Board an appointment of Marshall Lanto to the Council on Aging.
Mr. Chairman, can I just mention that in the letter that Ms. Lanto had submitted to the Council on Aging, she does want to make certain that the Board is aware that in the '70s with the Council on Aging, she was back on a committee that petitioned the Bureau of Elderly Affairs in Boston to get an actual Council on Aging started here in town. So I know we had her before for an appointment in a previous meeting, but the Council on Aging had submitted a letter prior to their vote, so now they voted, and now we can submit that for you to vote on.
I'll second that.
Roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Town Administrator Report.
Yes, the first item on the agenda, of course, is an update about our Town Hall. I know we just concluded a workshop, Mr. Chairman, and, but for the edification of the public, I think it's important, and also we had one Board member who wasn't here. Just a quick synopsis, last meeting, we had actually selected a firm to actually conduct the investigative analysis of what has caused the structural fatigue and potential failure of the building. And having said that, I've been in touch with the insurance company, and the insurance company had agreed that we could select the firm and that they would cover the cost of that. Having said that, I was in touch with Maya, which is our group insurance, and they were happy to hear that we had selected somebody. They're aware of the firm, they don't always work with the firm. I think one of the things we wanted was a firm that wasn't necessarily entrenched with an insurance provider, but had a national scope and had resources to draw from. So however, they said that they would be in touch with Mr. Zona, who was the principal senior, senior principal engineer who's going to be overseeing it. They have reached out, I spoke with them today. They had initially reached out, and one of the things that Mr. Zona had mentioned to me that he thought was important is to make sure that we define with legal counsel and/or with your Board about whether we want to see if we can be the main contractor with the actual engineering firm. The reason for that is if it is only the insurance company that does that, there may be sometimes discussions that the insurance, the engineering firm would like to have with us that might be precluded because they have the direct relationship with the client, which would be the insurance provider. I don't see that the insurance provider would necessarily find fault with us, since they asked us to find and pick and select. The end goal is to find out what's really causing this problem, and we're all on the same page. So if I could get some direction from the Board, I would appreciate it, because I would touch base with Town Council to see if they could draw up a simple agreement with the actual engineering firm, and then perhaps we can proceed to be designated as the main client. The end goal, I've been assured by the senior principal engineer, is that regardless of whether we are the principal client to the engineering firm or not, it's not going to affect the outcome, because they are really scientific engineers, and they look really at the problem and trying to define it for the community. So they'll do that regardless. It's a matter of whether there might be some kinds of conversations as they get closer to those kinds of results that they would like to have with us, and they might be precluded because we're not their direct client. So I would advocate that we should try to be their direct client and put it forward, and even have the Town Council draft up an agreement. If you can provide me with that direction, I would, I would actually, you know, pursue that.
I would entertain that motion to have Town Council put up an agreement. It's almost. Second.
Okay.
Roll.
Aye.
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 Having said that, as far as the update too, I would like to say that the Chief has been incredibly gracious in providing us some space in a very tight area, which is our police department. It has not come without having a few bumps in the road, but we have now really operationalized our infrastructure IT-wise. We are both in the garage, the bookings area of the police department, and even my office is in a cell block, and as unglamorous as that sounds, we're making do. And I'll say the reason why we can make do is we have, you know, been welcomed there by the Chief with the understanding we're doing this in a temporary, in a temporary schedule, but the people have been wonderful, they're paying their taxes, they're coming every day. Again, I want to reiterate to the public, because we still have people who don't know that the Town Hall is closed, and you just have all the operations that we're doing at the police station. So please feel free to come by. Every single day, we're there, Monday through Thursday, and we can make sure that we address your concerns. So, so far, so good on that front. The heat wave has broken a little bit. I got to tell you, the garage was no picnic to be in, because it doesn't have air conditioning or anything like that, but the rest of it is working out, and we've been making adjustments. And so far, I think everybody is in good enough spirits, because we know it's going to be a temporary thing until we can find a better solution. So that would be it for the Town Hall. Do you want me to go?
Agreement.
Oh, yes. The next item on my update is the intermunicipal accounting agreement. We, since our last meeting, had a departmental meeting with the Town of Oxbridge, and some of you may or may not know that we recently entered into an intermunicipal agreement with the Town of Oxbridge. They have been expediently working to try to make this transition. We felt it was the most important to do this right at the beginning of the fiscal year, and for town government, it ends on the 30th and begins July 1st. So Oxbridge is really taking that to task with us. They met with all our department heads, we met with, at the police conference room, and the town manager from Oxbridge, as well as the town accountant, and they also have two other people that work in their financial division. So we have a really great amount of resources, considering even the town manager there had been the finance director and had been an accountant for over 25 years in municipal government. So having said that, we now, through the weekend, have been trying to meet this first deadline of working with them. That means we're going to a whole new software system, and we signed an agreement last Friday, but they had been already working on trying to load our system into what they call Vadar System, which is a more advanced system than what we currently have. And true to their words, they worked all weekend to load a lot of minutia detail, which is very important in municipal governments, because we have a lot of line items, and they're trying to match them. And so today, they came at 4:00 to make sure that you would have your first accounts and payables, warrants to sign, and we recognize that we're going to continue to work on all the other aspects of our budget, but so far, so good. So I wanted to say that that part of it's been very pleasant. I think the Chief will, will tell you, we've had very good straightforward talks. Any kinds of questions that have come are very much answered and seem elementary to them, but for us, they've been important ones, and in the past, we haven't always had that access. So they've assured us of that, we feel good about that, and so far, so good.
In saying that, we're to sign the intermunicipal agreement this evening.
Yes, you are. That is another thing, I've got the actual formal, we went, gone back and forth with language, you did see the original. There was some tweaking of the language that I did with the other town manager, and you'll see in the packet at the end, we do have the formal agreement to be signed. So, yes, thank you for pointing that out.
And did that all go through legal?
Yes, yep. I had sent that to him. There was, the few minor adjustments had more to do with just outlining their process, and, you know, that was their addition to it, so. So I'll put that together with our end meeting minutes and everything else to be signed. Okay.
171 Central Street.
Before you start, I'm just going to excuse myself, I am in the neighborhood.
Okay.
Step up.
All right. Yes, Mr. Chairman, I put this on the agenda mainly to alert you that we have been in touch with our Town Council over what has been an ongoing issue for this community. You are in possession of some documentation that has come from legal counsel, which I would venture to say, I would not say we'd be discussing this evening, because we believe that it could compromise our ability to conduct legal discussions at a later point in time. My point for bringing it up is to say that legal counsel has had a very large amount of documentation to go through. I've actually been on the phone with them to talk about and to clarify any questions that they had had. They've put together a synopsis of what they feel is important for our community to consider and to give us a pathway forward to have to deal with this issue. So I put this before you, because it obviously targets a number one, a number of our Boards and people who may be in some leadership capacity in the community. It also discusses other roles at the state and federal levels. My point of bringing it up is to actually try to schedule an executive session, and I've already started to outreach to some of these department heads, so that they may be, as part of that executive session, so that we can actually plan, you know, an actual step forward with making sure that everybody's on the same page and know what their responsibilities should be, and how we can actually really try to pave a way to be helpful to this issue that has been ongoing for this community.
So I would entertain a motion to schedule an executive session at our next regularly scheduled meeting. It's almost. Second. Roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, can I clarify, then? I will also be inviting those people from the Border Health and the Conservation Boards to be part of that. Okay.
And the police chief.
Yeah. Anybody who I would expect relate to also enforcement. The next item on the agenda...
You have four.
Yes, the next item I put on the agenda, as the Chairman knows, we have been pursuing, because of the timing of the year, a lot of different opportunities for grants. One in particular that we're already doing with Central Mass Regional Planning and our Highway Surveyor is a Masworks grant in particular for Central Street, and we know that there's a tight window frame, I've mentioned this before, that the Maswork grant applications begin mid-August and then conclude like mid-September, so it's like a month to actually get a lot of information together. So that one is proceeding. I bring up Masworks grants in the plural, because I have been approached by the Town of Oxbridge, in particular their DPW Director, Ben Sherman, who had brought to my attention that he thought we did so well in our intermunicipal agreement that we had an opportunity to pursue another grant that actually affects part of Millville. This grant in particular would have to do with addressing a longstanding issue that affects both some residents in Millville and those in Oxbridge, and it has to do with the Kempton Street area, where we actually have several homes up there that are supplied with water, and then there's a whole fire suppression system that goes up there. What they have noticed is that they've had some significant problems, because they've overextended the build-out beyond really what, going way, way back, what was expected in terms of the number of homes, and so that there are some time periods where they have not only not had pressure at all to some of the, not just the existing hydrants, but also to some of the homes, and they worry about a catastrophic failure that could affect a large portion of Oxbridge, more so than, than Millville, because we only have so many that are there. But they want to actually have this Board think about entering into a cooperative grant application, in which they would create both a, you know, an actual holding area, tank, along with upgrades to the system. Ben Sherman said that he would like to come before your Board to tell you exactly what that is in more detail, and I thought if we could extend the invitation, you could tell me which meeting, obviously we have a timeframe that's a little bit of a crunch, but he, he asked if I would do that, and I said absolutely, so I don't know if we can make it the next session.
Why don't we schedule it? I entertain a motion to have them here for the next session.
I have a question. Through the Masworks, by joining with the DPW from Oxbridge, would that, if we put one in exclusively for Millville, would that...
Discount it?
Yeah.
No, no. They would be looked at, viewed differently, and they're prioritized differently. So in this one, maybe an infrastructure grant that is drawing from a completely different area. Masworks combined itself to five different entities that used to be P Weds. It was Moore, which has to do with relocating businesses and preventing them from relocating and keeping them in Massachusetts. There's a whole series of areas that they do, so this, having also to do with fire suppression and water, wouldn't necessarily be in competition with us, and they, they look at the merits and rating individually, so I'm not worried about that.
And could we also check with the Chief in regards to, I mean, I realize we only have a few homes, but if this is a grant, would it be able to extend for a hydrant system to maybe come out to Chestnut Hill Road in Kempton and provide, you know, and not providing town water by any means, but providing another water source in the hill, which we don't have, as a possibility?
Mr. Sherman, it indicated that, knowing that there may be some development potential there, but also to the existing homes, that there would be improvements. I would suggest that we would have our, you know, fire chief and anybody he thought was important, along with Mr. Malali as our Highway Surveyor, to be part of that discussion when he comes, so that they can be apprised of that.
All right.
So I will definitely invite them to be part of that discussion. I think you had a motion on the table.
I'll second it.
I made a motion.
Okay.
Roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next agenda item, yes, for me, was the status of our town planner. We had, I think, a total of eight applicants in the end. The town, our planning board and our Chairman of Planning have met to review those applications. I believe they've whittled it down to four. They're going to be having them come in for interviews, and I do know that the planning board had, at least the leadership, had indicated to me that they were looking at particular applicants who had some direct experience, as opposed to being new or fresh out of school, because they believe that we have a fair number of significant projects that would need some real hands-on things. So they're going to be recommending those four and then whittling it down, and then I plan to meet with the Chairman of the Planning Board, myself, and the applicants that they have forwarded, and then hopefully we'll be making a decision as soon as they do that. So, so far, so good.
What does this panel look like?
Well, our assess... Well, our assessor is away this week, so I know when they come back, the particular date that they've selected, I'm not aware of to do those final, but they are doing them all in one, one night, I believe. But I can have that update for you at our next meeting, if not the recommendation, if it winds up being sooner than that. And then the final thing I have for town administrator update, my, our police chief has given me a new eyewitness identification policy. It's quite extensive. I did send it and scan it to you guys in advance. But one of the things I wanted to make sure of is that you had some time to read it, whether you're not, you're ready to adopt it and review it, having reviewed it before this evening. But I wanted to put that on our agenda, and I don't know if the chief wants to speak to that at all. Would you like to speak about the policy to let the board know a little bit more about it?
No.
Okay.
This is basically a boilerplate.
Correct.
He already put that in the letter. I noticed that.
Yeah. I gave it to the union, so they're going to review it for 10 days as well.
Okay.
So if you review it, let me have that by the next meeting.
Okay. So we'll put it back on the meet, on the agenda for the 15th.
Thank you.
That's it. I conclude my town administrator update. Thank you.
Selectments forum. Roll. Gannifel.
Not just the centennial, August 20th in the park. And I do want to thank the residents. I've gotten some private messages, some personal texts, some inquiries on some Facebook pages, just what's going on with the town hall and where do I pay my taxes. Everybody's been, as mentioned earlier, that I've come across has been patient and understanding. So thank you to all the residents, along with our workers during this difficult time.
John?
I'm all set.
I'm all set. I'm all set, so.
So the only thing that we have next is the signatures for the various intermunicipal accounting services agreement. I actually put two copies in there. I thought we should have an original, and they have an original. It's a nice paper for you guys. And then also, we have the minutes of June 20th that you've approved earlier and the vendor warrants. And that would conclude.
Yes, our next regularly scheduled meeting is going to be August 15, 7:15. We're going to, we're going to sign warrants and agreements, and then we'll adjourn. Thank you. We'll sign and adjourn.
I think that's it, John. I think the last one was a duplicate.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, so that's all right.
All that we covered. That's a daily quickie.
I also wanted to hand out, forgot to hand this out earlier. If you can take one, it's related to the issue that I know will come up when we do the workshop with the chief. How about, I forgot to hand that out earlier. It's just more information related to the workshop that's going to come up.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah. So some more. Oh, yeah, I texted you.
He was. Because we knew we couldn't get you for that thing, and I said, just like, oh.
Keep going.
You know, I mean, it's one of those kind of odd things. I said, maybe you won't have anything. So I said, I mean, because now we don't have the money.
Motion.
You know what I'm saying? Too.
Make the motion to adjourn.
Well, Mr. Chairman, you forgot to explain why your gavel has changed.
Because my real gavel is locked up in the town hall. We can't get to it.
So today, it's an ice cream scooper, but it's still functioning. Go ahead, sorry.
I second John's motion.
Roll.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.